Go ahead and get our December meeting tonight. Let's, we'll go ahead and start by standing saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Collins?
Yes.
Let's all pray. Dear Lord, thank you this day that you've given to us for many wonderful blessings we have for so many of the blessings that we so often take for granted, Lord. Especially at this time, we pray that you'll be with all those that are missing family, that are longing to be with family, those that are struggling, Lord. We pray that you'll continue to put your loving embrace around them, or we also pray that you'll be with the members of this board as they make decisions this evening, and those of us that lead the children in this county, pray that you'll help us to make the right decisions. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, taken by Mr. Edwards. Have any discussion on that? All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? No. Alright, no additions. We, just so you know, we have, we have five of us here. That is enough for a forum, so just to make that available. We have several out tonight, but we do, we have barely enough. We're good, so. Uh, Dr. Berg?
Good evening. Uh, we were planning to start with substitute teachers of the month, but I, staff EZ has not arrived yet, so I'm wondering if perhaps they're going to come later thinking that the meeting started at seven, so.
And that's fine. If they come here at seven or something, we can slide them in. That'd be fine. So just catch my attention if you don't mind.
Will do. Uh, we'll start with our American fidelity teacher of the month. We'd like to congratulate this month. We have Ms. Tracy Conrad. Ms. Conrad, if you'll come up. Ms. Conrad teaches at Drummond Elementary School. Uh, she is 24-year veteran of teaching. She doesn't look that old. She's a 24-year veteran teacher. And her principal, Michelle Legoff, is not here tonight. She apologizes. She's with her son. He's graduating from TCAT, so that's why she's not here. Uh, but she did say in her nomination to, uh, concerning Ms. Conrad, we have a decorative cougar paw that adorns our teacher of the month store. This year, we've implemented pass the paw. What does that mean? The teacher of the month passes the paw to another deserving teacher. This month, the paw was passed to Tracy Conrad because Ms. Conrad is very involved with school activities and all of the students. She always goes all out, and that's exclamation point, all capital letters. She took on the unknown with restorative practices and is doing a fantastic job. So we want to congratulate tonight Ms. Tracy Conrad.
Can we get a picture? Can Ms. Berg get a picture? Let's do that. We'll make sure. Sorry. I'm not feeling your hands.
I want to see you blow the bubbles.
And this month, we're starting something new. Uh, I told you last month we were going to start students of the month, and we have two students of the month that we're going to recognize. And we're going to start from Drummond Elementary, Larry Milliken. So Larry, if you'll come up. Can you hold that? Let him see it while I read all the nice things that the teacher said about you. Um, he is a first grader at Drummond Elementary School, and his teacher checked all of these things that he is really good at. Cooperation and work ethic, leadership, community involvement, considerate to others and assist others in need, major improvement in grades, and he's a positive role model for other students. And she says, I believe Larry should be chosen because he has an amazing work ethic. He came to my classroom right around grade level, but is continuing to become an advanced student. In addition to his work ethic, he excels at following all rules, and that's what makes him a good teacher. So congratulations, Larry. Great job.
We're going to take a picture.
We take a picture?
I don't know why I'm doing that. One, two, three. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you. Good job, man. Good job.
Good job, Larry.
And then next, representing Monford High School, Ms. Alexis Hale. You'll come up. And her principal is here with her, not Dr. Courtney Fee, so we certainly want to acknowledge her. Uh, but she is outstanding in cooperation and work ethic, leadership, community involvement, considerate to others, assist others in need, outstanding attitude, outstanding grades, positive role model for other students. And Dr. Fee attached a letter. Alexis Hale is the student every school wants on campus. That's awesome. Uh, she is most deserving of student of the month for Tipton County Schools because of her dedication to academics, her desire to influence this great nation, and her surrounding community, and her commitment to serving others. She is well-rounded and academically prepared, armed with a 4.43 weighted GPA. Leadership experience and many service hours. Alexis will arrive at her school of choice with an inquisitive mind and a service mindset. Academically, Alexis excels in her studies across the board, and particularly in healthcare and the sciences. At the conclusion of this year, she will have 64 hours of college credit from full enrollment and AP classes, advanced placement classes. Entering college with two years of classes under her belt. As Alexis's senior year is unfolding, it is increasingly evident that she can successfully, successfully pursue any number of career paths. That said, because of her keen interest in the sciences and healthcare, Alexis has chosen chemistry and pre-med studies as the avenue to reach her future goals. She understands the competitiveness of these types of programs, so she consistently enrolled in the highest level classes in high school in order to gain admission. Additionally, Alexis's commitment to serve is tremendous. When we need someone to volunteer, Alexis is always ready, and particularly when it involves her other areas of strength, her organizational skills and leadership. We call on her to represent our school in a variety of activities, including, including freshman open house, campus tours, ad generation for our yearbook, and even organizing parts of graduation. We know she will take this service attitude and school spirit approach with her to her college of choice. Alexis enjoys serving others, interacts well with others, and knows how to use her strengths to accomplish goals. Alexis is a tremendous asset to Monford High School and will be a tremendous asset to her school of choice. She will take full advantage of this distinction. She will exhibit exceptional leadership in college, and she will learn as much as she can throughout her journey. Without reservation, I recommend Alexis Hale for student of the month for Tipton County Schools.
Congratulations. I'm going to take a picture with Dr. Fee. We'll take a picture. Congratulations. Tina, smile right there. Thank y'all. Great.
Good job, y'all. Good job, y'all.
She's going to Union University.
Union, alright. Good job, Alexis. There you go.
Congratulations. It is. This is good. That's awesome.
Finally, we would like to recognize our 2425 Tipton County Schools Supervisor and Principal of the Year, Mr. Steve Macklin, who is unable to be here tonight. He is the supervisor of accountability and attendance. He has been selected as our Tipton County Schools Supervisor of the Year. Mr. Macklin has 28 years of experience in education and has served as a teacher, assistant principal, and principal of Cressby Middle School. He was also the 612 instructional supervisor before moving into his current role as supervisor of attendance and accountability. Mr. Macklin was unable to be here tonight, but we wanted to publicly congratulate him on the work he does for students in the district every day. So congratulations. And then finally, our 2425 Principal of the Year is Dr. Yolanda Jones. Dr. Jones, if you'll come on down. Dr. Jones is in her fourth year as principal at Monford Middle School. Make sure I had that right. Prior to being a principal, she was a math teacher and assistant principal at Covington High School, so she, she went back south. You went to Monford. I thought so. During her tenure as principal, Monford Middle School has consistently exceeded state average on T-Boss achievement and growth, and has been named a reward school by the Tennessee Department of Education. And I have some comments and from students and teachers at Monford Middle School as to why Dr. Jones deserves this recognition, so. Uh, this is from Ms. Jessica Pickett. Dr. Jones sets high expectations for herself. I don't know why you're standing in the back. This is not Chinatown. Dr. Jones sets high expectations for herself. Therefore, these expectations naturally get set for her staff and students. She routinely questions strategies, challenges norms, and highlights achievements. Dr. Jones is involved in each facet of Monford Middle School, knowing her teachers and students to better support academic and professional growth. She takes on burdens to relieve additional duties for teachers, but doesn't publicly announce these tasks. Dr. Jones welcomes feedback from stakeholders and is sure to listen and modify if she sees a more student-led alternate is appropriate. I'm sorry, is provided. I recently earned my master's degree in leadership, and Dr. Jones helped me through the process each step of the way, spending countless hours answering my questions and looking up research for me. She asked me the hard questions, included me in decisions so I could learn the procedures, and continues to support my professional growth. Dr. Jones understands that data tells a story about a child. She encourages her teachers to dig deeper and expect nothing more than high standards of growth and achievement for every child, building a relationship and setting high expectations throughout the process. She is deserving of the title Principal of the Year for the crucial role she plays within the lives of so many at Monford Middle. And then Ms. Randy Cox. Dr. Jones is very deserving of the Principal of the Year award. She encourages a positive school culture, supports student success, and ensures that teachers and staff feel supported and valued. She handles challenges and difficult situations with calm, clear decision-making, and always focuses on finding solutions that benefit the entire school community. We are very blessed to be under her leadership. Ms. Jennifer Botticello says, as the kids these days would say, Dr. Jones is all the things. I think about the qualities of an effective leader. Inspiring, accessible, respectful, a role model, but most of all encouraging. Dr. Jones checks off all the boxes. There is a song by Bette Midler titled "Wind Beneath My Wings" in which she sings, I will not sing it. In which she sings about the unseen hero. This song in so many ways describes Dr. Jones. She encourages us to fly, to soar to new heights. Dr. Jones doesn't walk in front of us. She walks next to or behind us because she wants us to shine. She doesn't boast about herself. She continually celebrates the accomplishments of the teachers, staff, and students within our building. Dr. Jones ultimately holds herself and those around her to a higher standard, and she never lets you think you're not capable of being the best version of yourself. We are thankful for the core values she displays with passion and enthusiasm every single day she walks into Monford Middle School. And then from the students. She has such cute hair. She always looks so nice. She said she stopped two girls, and they both said the same thing. Other students said, Dr. Jones listens when I talk to her. Dr. Jones makes sure everyone is doing what they should be. Dr. Jones smiles and says hello or good morning when I walk down the hallway. She always asks how my day is. Dr. Jones lets us do a lot in May after testing, and that is cool. Always after testing, right. Congratulations.
Ready? One, two, three. Great job.
Congratulations.
And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Dr. Berg.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, y'all, we appreciate y'all being here, working so hard. Thank you. You're more welcome to stay if you want to.
Good to see you.
Alright, you too. Thank you.
See y'all.
Look at your consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is? Anything you want to pull out?
I don't think we can pull that out. We were going to do discussion real quick on the perjuring the, I got all fired up when I read it earlier. The, uh, the student representative.
You want to pull that out? Okay, alright, we'll pull that out. Alright, we'll, uh, want to discuss that now, Ian? Is that how we want to do that right now? Just discuss that? Okay, yeah, yeah.
I just, uh, as I read through, I, I got excited. It's probably going to replace CTE as one of my favorites. No, uh, I thought it was a, a great idea. Uh, in the first part, though, it explained briefly how we would seek out that student. And I didn't know if we could add live on that. And then kind of my, my thought process there is if we were going to really do it democratically, right, like a student body. I know we had student government when I was coming through school. Um, and then two, it seems to me that we have three different districts that we're representing. So if the intent was for the student to go back, gather information and bring it forward, I didn't know if there was enough room for that, or if there was a way to democratically take three different districts. Something, you know, it kind of discussion there since it's on them.
Like, like three different parts of the, of our district and like have them made or something like that?
Well, you have three different high schools.
Right, right.
Where you have a representative, and then similar to our hierarchy, you know, you have a principal, which we ask you intellectual questions a lot of times, being the superintendent, is where they would ask their principal.
Right.
Hey, you know, other than listening to their, their constituents, you know, you can ask an intellectual question to your principal, and then they're coming prepared. Even though they're not a voting member.
Right.
I thought that was neat. Uh, I'd love to hear their input on a lot of the stuff that we do, so. Just some food for thought.
No, I think that's good. As a matter of fact, and I think some of the things, I know Blake was, you know, Blake spoke with a few other chairs that have a similar thing, right? Um, one, or in some cases, there were two, and so I reached out to some of those superintendents as well to see how they're doing it. And they have one. It makes it a little, you know, more wieldy to have one, and it's almost like a pilot. We've never done it before. And so that, I think that was our, kind of stick our toe in the water, see how this works kind of deal, and then it could grow into something more. Even though it's not, they're not a voting member, their input is going to be really interesting. When we have the discussions and stuff, you know, there may be a number of things we're talking about, and here they go, oh, now hold on a minute, in the building, I'm not real sure that's going, you know. That's why we were so excited about trying it out. Um, and so, I mean, that's just my input. What do you think?
Yeah, no, I agree. I, I think, um, uh, as early on, this is dipping our toe in the water, so we don't really know how it's going, what it's going to look like. And again, you're, you're, you're hoping that the young man or woman that we choose represents their people well, you know, that's the hope. And we've gotten really good feedback from some people, and so, uh, you know, as far as what that looks like, the makeup, and how many people is involved in that, you know. Hopefully, that'll grow, I think is the intention, you know, is maybe it's a, maybe that person meets with a couple of other people in schools and stuff, you know, but maybe just having one representative. I don't know what it looks like at the end, you know, but I think the, the intent is, is for that person, that young man or woman, to be here and to be involved in it, for us to hear their input, you know, from a student, you know, body, you know, being that representative, and how, how he gets that, or he, she gets that information. I don't know if we've got that figured out yet, you know.
I think that's what we want to work with.
We need to work toward that, but I think the hope is also is that person will shadow us as well, maybe go to certain events with, you know. Much like, um, when we were at the Tennessee convention, you know, the, you know, um, what's the Arlington Vox, Dale Vox? He was there, you know, he had his two there. I, I, I thought that was intriguing, you know, I was intrigued by that, so, um, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that's the hope, is to have these students shadow us and to be, you know, good leaders, but.
I think as I was thinking through, you're going to get three different, we obviously have three way different high schools.
I agree.
That's phenomenal. That's great. I love the opportunity for everybody. And so I think you get three differences in opinion on how you do that, and if we're stacking it too deep and all of that. I, I'm just kind of food for thought, throwing it out there. And, uh, I think during a public comment period would be appropriate time. I'm just thinking about how we were either appointed or elected, and that democratic process that they may go through in high school in order to get to.
Right.
And, uh, the kind of the seriousness of being able to represent the school. And what are the important things that come out of my mouth, and how do I act and all this?
Oh, I got you. No, that's good. Yeah, yeah, that's good. And I, I think this will be something, you know, that the process at the beginning of the year would look different, you know, at the beginning of the, when we get this pilot done and, and see how this works. The folks that we've talked to, like two of the different superintendents that I spoke with, said, um, specifically, it was nice. We wanted to start small and see what this looked like and get it right, and then we could, you know, kind of grow from that. And two of them said they specifically chose a student from the chair's district. Two of them told me that. So, you know, that was a thing too, that we kind of looked at, thought, well, if we're going to pilot it, maybe that is where we should try it, you know, and just see how that works, and then, you know, look from there.
Yeah. Are, are you, I guess, I'm going to push it to go, are you recommending, I don't want to push past it if you're recommending, are you thinking more it ought to be with choosing the student rep? It ought to be more of a democratic process? Is that what you're thinking? Is that, am I understanding that?
Oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And then, kind of in the whole scheme of things, once your toes are all getting soaked.
Yeah.
Maybe evolving into representing the three, what I would call districts.
Okay.
Kind of equally, if there's opportunity to do that, I understand what you're doing here, but.
Right.
I got you.
Do they still do student government?
They call it different things, but yeah, student council, things like that.
Because I think, you know, if I were a teacher or a superintendent, I'd go select a pretty cool person. But if I was a student, I'm going to select somebody a little different maybe than what you would select.
Somebody who's going to have my voice. And I think what, what, you know, I think what the plan was to go to the principal and get some names for the principal. It's what, just what we've, you know, talked about thus far, to get that name from them. I mean, you know, we wouldn't, that, that name wouldn't be generated from us. It would come from the principal. You know, and then go for there. That, that's what we had thought.
And one other thing I wrote about too was, uh, maybe a vice chair. I know you don't call them the chair, or you know, they wouldn't be a chair, but, uh, having a vice student representative as well. Because my kid went to my office.
I think, and we'd have thought about, and we even thought about like them having a seat, like up here.
Yeah.
I mean, they'd be a part of the process.
Sitting right next to Dr. Berg and that person, keep her in charge.
I mean, that was, yeah, yeah. That's what we thought we'd try, so.
Yeah, that, so I think that's our hope. I mean, I don't want to, you know, if we want to look at changing this, you know, we can, we can certainly, um, you know, take this under advisement if we wanted to to the next meeting, if you wanted to see some changes. I think the, the, the goal right now, since it's new, is to see how this works, because it might just be a total flop too, you know. We don't, I don't, you know, I don't think so.
It will stick with CTE.
No, I, I think, I, I.
I like CTE.
But I, I think you're, I think what you brought is some of the things that we had already discussed as well, and I think, um, that was the reason for him to reach out to several superintendents that are doing it, and so we kind of tailored it more, you know, a lot on what they were doing, so. But it was most certainly, if it's something we're not comfortable with moving forward, we can certainly, you know, take it under advisement and talk about it a little bit more if you want to.
I think we'll move forward and get your toes all soaked up, and then see what's working and what's not.
And then, and then maybe discuss it again like August or something like that, see if we want to expand it.
Yeah, this may be, I think, I look at it as an evolving thing, because ultimately is, we're here for the students, and we want to get them involved, and, you know, we want to show them, you know, we, I mean, we can learn. I want to hear their voice as well, and, uh, and then we can show them, you know, hopefully in student government as well, and get them involved in some of that as well, so. So do we have a motion then to approve this policy? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, taken by Mr. Gill. Do we have any discussion? Anything else on this? Alright, so, motion passed. Any, all in favor of this policy 11-0, 1.1021, the new student board representative, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. Back to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Agenda?
I like the motion.
Mr. Gray makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Mr. Edwards makes a second. Have any discussion? All in favor then of the consent agenda passing, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. Uh, who's starting?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Have, uh, five items of business to take up initially, so, um, if you take a look there in your finance packet. Brighton Softball Booster Club has made application to become a recognized school support organization. They've completed the required steps and submitted the necessary paperwork, which is posted to your board folder. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I request a motion that the board approve their application and that they be sanctioned and operate effectively immediately.
Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, we have a second. Taken by Mr. Gray. We have any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item of business inside your packet are some proposed amendments to the professional services agreement between the board and A2H Incorporated. Uh, this amendment provides the architect's scope of services for the procurement of furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the new, two new schools, Covington Elementary and Covington Middle. Uh, this will include public and principal items that contribute to the overall aesthetic of the project. Examples of these are movable furniture such as desks, tables, chairs, lounge furniture, and equipment such as decorative public waste receptacles. The chairman requests a motion that the board approve the necessary parties to execute these agreements.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Edwards, we have a second. By Mr. Jenkins, do we have any discussion on this? The only, the only question I have, I guess, from signing these documents is, is I guess more of a funding. Is, is this, so this is, uh, services, is that correct, to look for these, or does it not?
All the procurements for that.
Right, so this is services. So this 22,000 for the one, and now assume the 22,000 for the other, 22, yeah, so they match. Is that coming out of, what line item is that coming out of, of our budget?
So, the district was issued the actual cost value for their contents replacement, uh, back in the previous budget year. Couple of checks for each school, and I can pull the checks up, both over, cost a million dollars, each one over a million, one just under a million. Those went to fund balance at June 30th, because there was no furniture purchase, obviously. And so when the time comes for us to actually start purchasing furniture, we'll come back in for amendment to move that money that went to fund balance that was insurance, to come back out to pay for the furniture and fixtures, and all the associated costs.
So this, but this cost here from A2H is?
That's their percentage for doing all the liquid.
Right, but that'll come out of it. That'll have to come back out of fund balance as well?
Mm-hmm. Insurance payment as well.
It is. Okay. Now, does this, I'm sorry to ask, just because of insurance, is, is this something that we have to submit to Crawford and them to, once we, if we, as we get, well, I guess we're paying for it now, right? We're paying for it, so do they need to see copies of this?
I have no objections to sharing it with them, but I don't know that we're required to share it with them. I mean, at some point, there, especially if we exceed the amount that they gave us initially.
Okay.
Yeah, but I mean, because it's an updated, and we've been sharing everything else they've been requesting, I don't think it'd be a problem. I'll just, we'll just send it to them after I sign it. I'm, I'm fine with that.
I just noticed, I remember our matrix of everything they wanted to see, and it seemed they wanted to see a lot of our, even our contracts down to that, you know. And so it may not be a bad idea to pass that along, just so, you know, that they're, when we submit that, if it's a, uh, uh, you know, whatever invoice we get, or, you know, schedule hours, whatever, you know, that monthly pay mat, they, they're going to be like, well, where is this contract I was?
That's right, and we certainly don't want anything to go out. We've been making progress, so we don't want to, anything to like be a toe stub on this and go, well, now wait a minute, you didn't have those doc, we don't want that. So I say we continue to give it to them. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Any other questions, Mr. Gill, anybody? Okay.
The only, the only thing I'd have, it's a lot of work with you. Because it's pretty standard stuff. It, you know, I named you as the owner, but I'm looking through the list of stuff, and I'm like, good lord.
It's, it's pretty standard. I mean, and we've, we've scrutinized it pretty heavy. I mean, we've, we've looked, we've looked through it, um, and keep in mind, a lot of these documents look the way they do because we also, at the beginning, we also wanted to make sure they would pass FEMA's criticism. So that's why some of that's there, but a lot of that, yeah, we've been, we've been scrutinizing these pretty hard. Yes, sir.
As far as the selection process after your RFP and stuff, that's, I guess where I'm trying to narrow them, that you, that it's up to the owner, you know, I'm just reading through this real quick.
And we do that for, now, I will say this, like, if you don't want me throwing, throwing this in right now. One of the, uh, agreements that we have here with, uh, A2H lately, like, and when I say lately, I mean within the last couple of weeks, is that, um, any type of change order, anything like that, from this point forward, um, we both see. Blake will see it, I'll see it, Hunter will see it, Billy will see it, like, our group will all be able to scrutinize that and look at it. And thus far, they haven't done anything that really, really has freaked us out, but at the same time, that will be a definite check and balance, and everyone will be included on that. Y'all's elected board chair, me, our maintenance supervisor, and our CFO will all have input into that, plus, you know, of course, Lincoln, and they'll, they'll be at the table as well.
So when we talk about, real quick, when we talk about academic core, or art, or music, gymnasium, we're not talking about, we're talking about the physical instruments like music, for example. That's, is that, is there just the, or is that the furniture within the rooms, or is that?
Chairs, band, you know, music stands probably, I would presume, you know, anything that, that we didn't replace, because some of the band equipment we've replaced so that they could continue to have band.
Right.
Uh, but there are other things that would go, and I would submit, we're probably going to a music room that's not in the interim structures, that would need to be furnished. Probably, you know, uh, the sound panels on the walls, those type things.
Acoustic panels, could be microphones. It's, uh, you know, they don't go to your. Acoustic panels, could be microphones, it's uh, you know, they don't go to your radio, so it'd probably be a piano, like, you know, something like that.
Well, that's what I was asking. When you, when you start getting to that stuff, I wouldn't have a clue if I was the owner, if this was a good thing or not. That's where I was gonna go.
Well, and they compare it to the old, and I'll, I'll tell you, you know that, remember that Matterport scan that we had when we were in there, that, you know, they go through, and there's a Matterport scan of the whole building? That's come in really handy, because when insurance has asked questions, we have a Matterport scan of every room. Like, we know what was in there, right? So, that's been beneficial too, so if there was a piano in there, like I said, that the, that was utilized, you know, for the chorus program, or stands, or mics, or any of that stuff, it, it would, it would show up, and it'll be in inventory. So, um, that part seems to be going, would you agree, Hunter? I know Jamie's worked on that.
Well, I add to the, so the contents piece, we walked the building in January the third with Houston and one of the reps, it's over his contents piece for them, I forget what the gentleman's name is, if they're coming January the third, if anybody wants to join us, we're gonna do a tour of Brighton Middle, I think it is, or Mon, no, we're going to Monford Middle. And we're going to, I think it's Brighton Elementary, that's very like, you know, very similar in size, but they won't, they won't walk and see what one of our buildings currently, you know, looks like. I mean, that's not to count pencils and papers and books and all of that, but just from a contents and F F and E piece, to make sure that we're capturing all the stuff that we need, so. Anyone wants to be there, January third?
Sounds riveting. Yeah, thank you.
Well, and as I was saying, this, this, there's a lot of complex phases, it's a little more dynamic than going to Ashley Furniture where you're like, right in bedrooms, right? So, and, and they have the staff, A two H has the staff, they do this all the time, and so they, um, are probably more thorough than the average person.
My concern, and I'm probably, and I'm probably beating this horse, and I've, it's probably because we've been beaten as well, from the insurance company, I guess, is, is I'm assuming that by this, is that A two H, that they're going, they're gonna get a set of plans or whatever, and this is the amount of furniture that we need, I'm assuming that's going to line up with what we lost. That's right, correct, is, is, because I would assume Crawford and they were gonna scrutinize that pretty hard. You know, everything, so that, that's the intent, right, is to, and it, is it, but this is gonna be newer stuff, is this gonna be, it's gonna be like kind of quality, right?
So, we couldn't get a chair like that, get a lazy board recliner.
That's what I'm saying, we're anticipating this all to be like kind of quality, correct?
Correct.
To the best of their abilities at that time.
Similar, similar chair, but new. Yes.
Got it, and that's the, is just basically replacing what we had, turn the building upside down, shake it out, and what's left, right?
That's, that's right, and anything that we determined to upgrade in the process, number one, y'all would know about it, and we would pay for it, we'd have to pay for it, it's something we decided to deal up on. Yeah, I mean, and I'll, and I'll give you this example, so Hunter and I, uh, were at uh, MCC, the folks that are replacing all the cameras in all the high schools right now, and we went up there to look at like scoreboards. Well, you know, scoreboards have changed, you know, we can, we can update them now, where you run everything from your device, instead of it being the bulbs that go out type of thing. Well, the new scoreboards are, they're better, I mean, they're, they're more, so, you know, that could be something, it's like, no, they say, we're gonna pay for this, and then, you know, we would have to decide, okay, do we wanna upgrade that to make it, you know, nice, to make it like what you would get now in a new building, right? That's the kinda things that we would talk about, scrutinizing this. Stuff like that, but for the rest of it, it's gonna be mostly what it was, replaced with what it was, desk for desk, et cetera, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And I guess there's room in there, there's obviously gonna be a price discrepancy from when it was new at Crestview compared to now, insurance gonna take that into account?
Correct. Yes, correct. Replacement cost, that's right.
Replacement cost, okay.
That's a good question, and yes, we've asked that, that's, that's a good question, yes. That's correct, yeah. So, I don't move a, you know, nineteen ninety-two piece of furniture back in there, that's right, correct. We're gonna get new, we're getting new.
That's right. Any other questions? Any else? Alright, all in favor of passing these two uh, amendments, or these agreements with A two H, uh, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, next item of business, uh, there's a proposed agreement in your packet between Tipton County Schools and the University of Tennessee, which is actually their Center for Literacy Education and Employment Preschool Improvement Team, uh, to provide support to help enhance the quality of preschool programs, uh, specifically focusing on increasing inclusive opportunities for students with disabilities. This focus will aim to enhance development and implementation of individualized education programs, known as I, IEPs, and other preschool outcomes. Uh, these services are funded as part of the fiscal year twenty-five IDEA Partnership for Systemic Change Preschool Grant that the district's already been awarded. Uh, Mr. Chairman, request the board approve the necessary parties to execute this agreement with the University of Tennessee.
We have a motion? To approve, Mr. Jenkins, we have a second. Mr. Edwards, we have a second. We have any discussion on this?
Have we already been doing that?
This, well, I don't know that this particular contract with you two, we've done it, but yes, we've done, I mean, there's uh, contracts historically with parties that do focus on specific things like IEPs and five oh four, with Dr. Byrd. That's more out in her wheelhouse than mine.
I've seen a cost associated with that, am I missing that? Am I, is that fee schedule here, is that?
I see the late, the late amount, the fees and stuff, I don't see a cost either.
So, it's gonna be depending on how many they work with, I anticipate, like, how many, what the student count is and what student needs are. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at E Plan, I think there's fifty thousand dollars that is budgeted for this type thing. Uh, and it would be in this IDEA systemic preschool grant. Uh, matter of fact, I asked Mr. Beasley, if he'll look in there real quick, if he can tell us in E Plan, he likes to sign in, and he can tell us what's budgeted. That doesn't mean that whole amount of money is going towards this contract, it's just where this contract is included in the budget to pay.
Okay.
And when you look at E Plan, it's under the competitive funding applications, the IDEA systemic, this is not part of consolidated.
That's under two compensation, page six of seven, right, customer will pay university for the services outlined within the aforementioned scope. Total cost of services under this agreement will be fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
That should be it.
There it is, thank you.
I see it, yeah.
And that's, that, this agreement, total cost of services under this agreement fifty thousand, but we have that in a budgeted line item, is that correct? Budgeted, funded, good to go?
Yes, sir, already approved by the state.
Good.
And this board.
Great, I don't have any.
It's UTK, Richard, it's not Alabama, but other than that, it's probably pretty good.
I'll be the no on this one.
I voted anyway, sorry. It's a tough sell. Any, any other discussion on that? No, if, if not, then we have, all in favor of this UT contract, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excited about all of it, but really excited about this one. Back in the spring, the district applied for the Rural Utilities Service, another acronym for y'all, RUS grant. Rural Utilities Service Grant, Distance Learning and Telemedicine Loan Grant Program, it's called, uh, back in the spring. And we were notified today that we have been awarded one million seventy-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars, which is a great V twelve shot for our technology here in the district. Uh, this grant does require, and we knew this ahead of time back in the spring, a match of fifteen percent. So, for us, that is one hundred forty thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Uh, and so essentially, the total award is nine hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, and these funds, of course, are being used to furnish and improve technology applications for classroom and distance learning functions. Uh, Mr. Chairman, request a motion, uh, from the board to approve the necessary parties to execute this agreement and its terms.
Do we have a motion? To execute this agreement?
Do you have a agreement?
I don't, I don't.
I can load it, it was from the spring.
Yeah, I didn't have, yeah, I didn't have it either.
It was priority of, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the parties needed to execute it would be he and I signing it, right, and you, okay? Yeah.
We'll bring up discussion if we have a motion. Motion by Mr. Jenkins, we have a second. Seconded by Mr. Gray, we have any discussion on this?
Melissa wrote this grant, right? One of our tech supervisors wrote the grant.
So, you'll see a bunch of these, you know, for the classrooms, type, permission board type applications, and it's called a, what's it called, a plugins, uh, the thing with the little antennas that calls it?
It's gonna have a PC plugged into it.
PC plugged into it, it's got a fancy name, but I don't remember what it's called. It's the little black box with the two.
Onboard PC.
Onboard PC.
Yeah.
I think that's what they call it, onboard PC.
That type of equipment.
On, okay, and so, back up, I missed the part, so there, we have to fund, we, we have to match?
One hundred forty thousand dollars.
To receive nine hundred?
To receive nine hundred thirty-six thousand.
Okay, and this is something I assume is, because we didn't have the grant, we didn't have the hundred and forty something thousand budget, is that correct?
Well, we knew we had applied for it, and our, uh, intention, the board's intention back at that time was to use some of the TISA outcomes funding that we were getting in this month, and then February, March to go towards that.
Okay, so we shouldn't have to go to fund balance on that, okay, alright. Just, yeah, yeah, we're all tracking on that one. That's good.
And so, we pay one forty to get nine?
Thirty-six.
Right, no, it's a, yeah, makes sense, I mean, makes sense, but I had to make sure that we were correct, correct, yeah, no, that's good. So, you feel like, you feel good on the one forty, shoot that around into that line item?
Do this deal every day.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Tell, tell me, tell me that grant again.
It is called, uh, the, I mean, it is called the Rural Utilities Service Distance Learning and Telemedicine Loan and Grant Program. But it's referred to as the RUS grant, R U S.
Okay.
Uh, Rural Utility Service, and you all will hear that, of course, when we do the amendment for the uh, TISA outcomes funding that'll fund that one forty, you'll hear that again.
USDA affiliated grant.
Alright, that's excellent, I mean, that's, yeah, love, that's great. Uh, Mr. Gill?
Always thinking about recognizing the grant writer.
Yeah, Melissa Chittman wrote that grant, but she, uh, uh, you know, Dr. Byrd, I think, uh, uh, volunteered her to do it, and gave her some information, and she helped, but Melissa, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they were, they worked on that together.
Yeah, Melissa Redford and Melissa Chittman and Dr. Byrd.
Excellent, excellent, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, there may be a question from somebody at home watching as to why we're not buying student devices that's not allowed in this grant.
Okay, so it's restricted grant, okay.
It is, so that, that's why we couldn't use that funding to replace student devices, just in case that question's asked.
What is it restricted to? I know it's obviously this, but anything else, is it, is it?
It's to support like distance learning, so anything that's teacher device. And so, what we're trying to do, we have some older boards that we've had for a while that we're gonna have to replace, and we can give you a, when the grant was written, we were very specific into what was going to what school, and that was based on a principal saying this is what we need. But I'm, I'm happy to get you that information, I'll load it in a folder, I'll shoot it to you in email next week.
Great, thank you.
Melissa, but the, the other thing that, I don't know if everybody understands what we were saying was, these boards, you know, we hook our computers up to it, but if it has an onboard PC, it can serve as a standalone computer, but we have a lot of the boards in the schools that do not have the onboard PC, so we lost some of those to attach, and it makes it better, if you will, for teachers, more.
They only have four gigs around without the onboard PC, if you switch over to that, you're cooking Crisco.
No, I love it, thank you, Kevin. I love it. Any discussion, any other discussion on that? Alright, all in favor of the RUS grant, uh, execution of that, say aye. Any opposed, like, that? That motion passed, thank you.
That hundred dollar word I was looking for is slot in digital signage player. That's the, that's the term I was looking.
There's gotta be an acronym for that, right?
Sure, we can make one up if it's not, right?
We have acronym for everything, so, okay, thank you.
Alright, and so, uh, last order of business, well, to jump into some of the motions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we're good, yeah.
Alright, and so, last order of business is your financial reports for all the full four funds are in there, uh, for your review. One forty-one general purpose school, one forty-two school federal projects, one forty-three central cafeteria, and one seventy-seven education capital projects. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Dollar, we appreciate it very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to my agenda, so I can put it in the side. Alright, Dr. Byrd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, two quick things. Uh, last month, we started talking about the strategic plan, we looked at goal one, so tonight, we are looking at goal two. I put it in the folder for last month, but, uh, Mr. Nate provided you a copy tonight, so it'll look good in the back. Goal two is enhancing facilities, the things that are highlighted in yellow have either have been completed or are ongoing. And I, I won't read those to you, but if you have any questions about it, I think perhaps Dr. Combs and Mr. Bennett may be more qualified to answer these, because it, it deals with facilities. And that's not really my forte, but I'm happy to field those questions now, if somebody has, um, has a question, or I will yield to Mr. Bennett.
Y'all have any questions or anything for Dr. Byrd, or Mr. Bennett, or Dr. Combs? Dr. Combs, do you have any thing you wanna shed light on here, or?
I don't think so. I think we're, you know, pretty straightforward.
I'm the, uh, partner with any of the retrobit existing structures. I've got medium traction with that, I'm involved with that as well.
So, oh, wow, okay, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make this concise, and, uh, Hunter, could you help me if I, if I get off the tracks, uh, here? So, um, we've tried to work with FEMA the last number of years, uh, for them to help us fund backup generators, ever, backup generators at every one of our schools, right? That are good, functioning backup generators at all the schools, um, and then a few other things as well. Here lately, I know that we saw a ballistic demonstration at the sheriff's department, gosh, Hunter, when was that? Uh, summer?
Yeah, we were all wearing, um, shorts, leave when we were out there.
Okay, yeah, and headphones, and, so, but we saw, you might have been there, Mr. Dwight, okay, and so, but they showed, basically, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a material that you can line the inside of rooms and stuff with to make it more tornado safe, storm safe, ballistic safe, that kind of thing, that you line it. You can either build it that way, or you can also line it inside of the building. And so, we looked at things like that to see if FEMA would help us basically retrofit some of our current structures to have that inside, right? So, like a, a school that doesn't have a safer minute right now, right, like Atoka or the new schools we're building, let's say there's not a safer minute. You could use FEMA funding to help build the interior in there to make it more tornado safe. So, we have engaged with FEMA on that, and the other big thing were those generators, right? Those were the two biggest things that we have engaged with them about. Now, to answer your question, have we gained any traction yet? The answer to that would be no, we haven't heard anything. I will say that, uh, Baker McCool called me last week, beginning of last week, he's our EMA director for the county. Uh, and he's really jumping on this generator thing with us to help, and he's gonna help us get that rolling, because especially, you know, when the, 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 uh, power plant went down, or wherever the, 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 the substation went down a little bit ago, and five of our schools lost power. Well, you know, we could have had generators powering a lot of that, especially like, you know, phones and, and server rooms and all that kinda stuff, I mean, our, our room went down here, um, if we had those things in place, but we don't, so, that engaged him again, and so he's gonna help us with that, so.
We reached out, uh, third party, and then came up with the plan, and then, one thing that I learned through our process too, every time there was a disaster in Tennessee, where there was federal assistance, you could throw your name back in the hell again.
Yep, and that's why every time we had a flood, we had the storm damage, we had every one of those, and we had that big meeting at the, at the EMA building in Brighton. Um, we put that back in there, it's paperwork and everything. Tommy Dunham admitted it at the time, and then Baker helped us do it the last time, we've submitted that two or three times. Shannon Reed would, would help us work on it some, so, uh, yes, we hope to gain more traction, but now we have some people that I think are helping us through that, yeah.
Hunter, how many facilities do we have that are gener, backup, uh, generators?
We've got five generators spread around the county, with minimal, you know, I understand on the generators, I mean, you're gonna get, you wanna charge your cabinet, it's, it's only powering your principal's office, your fire alarm, no heat, but your, um, security alarm, so. Whenever you say you got backup generators, I mean, it's very, very minimal on what you're still be able to operate, you're still not gonna be able to cook in the kitchen, you know, you know. So, something to consider as we discuss backup generators, there's gonna be baselines.
Yeah.
Then there's gonna be all you guys, we wanna make sure we can leave nothing else we can feed them while they're, I mean, so.
Well, considering what we had a couple of weeks ago, and then also is, is just thinking about what happened at Brighton High a couple of years ago, you know, with the, you know, the busted pipe. I mean, it's gonna be imperative, I think, in the future that we have backup generators enough to eat on during those, at least that, so we don't have.
Those are things we'll have to, I don't, and I don't know what they're, you know, what they're gonna provide, if they'll provide a baseline, and then we as a district are have to, you know, take it to the next level to get heat.
And it may be something that we need to strategize too, coming in our, when, when we meet in a couple of months, you know, when we sit down as a board, and we have our, um, strategic meeting and stuff, we need to think about those things. I think those things need to be brought up as well.
Correct, and I do plan to have a very detailed math of what we currently have, what footprint they carry, as far as what schools, you know, what it's served, and then we would know, hey, we need to add something to that school, even though we do have something without any heat.
Mr. Gill?
Do you not have any generators back here?
Sir?
We've got small.
There's a small right back here. Natural gas power right back here.
But it, it just, it just powers the service, correct? Yeah, it's only powering the service, yeah.
This, this building needs to be back.
Yeah, the brain's a half of everything, right, I mean, yeah.
Right.
I mean, of the local stuff, yeah.
I don't know how you can control without, I don't know.
No, hey, you're, the, the choir's right back there in the corner, you're preaching to. No, hey, you're, the, the choir's right back there in the corner, and he's, he's, you're preaching to.
You talked about a wish list a couple weeks ago, there's, there's a.
Well, and about three years ago, when I was, about three years ago, on our capital projects plan, right, we had, we had generators for every school listed on there. And beside of it, in parentheses, it said FEMA funded, FEMA funded, and then the ones that we were gonna do, and FEMA funded, FEMA funded. And then none of that ever came through, and so then, you know, we replaced the roofs, we did all that kinda stuff. And I think it is definitely time to revisit that and add that to the, to the plan for all the buildings.
This, this would be a priority to me, and, and, you can send kids home, but you're not allowed to go home. You know, this, this has to make sure the kids are safe and have a place to come, you know, and it's.
It's not only that, though, but is, is, we get into the situation we had the other day, and I don't mean to bring that up, because I thought you did a great job, I think you guys did a great job of, of reacting to that. But you think about it, we have the buses out, kids are coming to school at that time, and then we finally get word that power's out. You know, and, and, but kids are in school at that time, we, we're trying to, you know, it would be nice to have a backup power there, we at least have some heat on, until we can make a decision, until you can make a decision as a, as a, uh, you know, I, I thought, I thought the reaction was great, but again, having backup generators kinda in twenty twenty-four kinda makes sense, you know, so we, I think it's something, we need to keep at the forefront of our minds to think about that, as how we best, you know, whether FEMA wants to fund it, or we fund it ourselves, we're just, we, we need to keep that as a priority.
And I, I, I really do appreciate you saying that, I mean, you know, six thirty buses are already rolling, and then we get notification that, you know, and then, and we don't know how long. That's the other thing too, is that you can't, well, for all day, or, sometimes we have power go out for thirty minutes and it comes back on.
Correct.
You know, so you keep them there, but, the other thing is this too, um, especially in some homes, I mean, uh, you know, we can, we can all talk about this. Uh, they may not get to eat if they don't eat with us.
I see.
Yeah, you know, they may not have a warm place to go if they're not with us, they may not have a, so, you know, again, you know, we try to keep them in the building as long as we can, as long as we can take care of them, and so, uh, another reason to have those generators in there so that we may be the option. So, um, just another reason.
No.
Yep, I, I agree.
Not to belabor the point, but I think it's just, it's good discussion, thank you for bringing this up, and we'll definitely keep, uh, our eye on this. Any other discussions on this, Dr. Byrd, do you have anything else to bring on the strategic planning?
No, on the strategic plan, no, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, quick policy review, uh, this month, we were looking at the second half of section four, I, I don't have any information, there were no questions. So, next month, we will have the first half of section five, which is the personnel section of the policy manual. Let's look at five point one zero zero through five point three one zero. And, um, if you look over those and have any questions, I'm happy to, uh, to, to fill those questions. Also, I believe next month, we'll start our policy committee, so we can also, uh, discuss that through our policy.
Yeah, I think that's kinda, yeah, the, we'll, policy committee will meet, what, hour, hour prior to our meeting?
Four minutes at five P M., yes, sir, starting January. Um, and then we have, uh, Staffy Z, Ms. Brittany is here to recognize substitute teacher of the month, and when she finishes that, we'll conclude our report with her too. Ms. Brittany, if you wanna come up?
I'm yours.
Hello?
Hey, Ms. Brittany, how are you?
I'm good, but I had two this week, I was at sea last month, so I just did two in one. My first one, I have Chelsea Foster, she is nominated from Crestview, um, they have spoke highly of her, they love her, they always saying that she's coming in on time. If she's gonna be out, it has to be something really serious, so we wanna go ahead and recognize Chelsea Foster. Then my next one is Mr. Dunn, he was nominated by Covington High.
Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Dunn, you. That loves to work, if you call him at six o'clock in the morning, he's gonna be there at seven forty-five when school starts, so I really do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it very much. Can you, can y'all stick around till, we, we won't be much longer, we'd like to get some pictures, make sure y'all get some pictures and stuff, so we can get that to Dr. Byrd. Is that okay, or does y'all have to go, okay, alright, thank you, thank you, we're almost done with our meeting, so thank you. Dr. Byrd, you have anything else to add?
No, sir, I finished my report.
Alright, is, Mr. Fields, is he out?
He is not, I can do his.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, um, I, I know that Mr. Fields sent y'all this ahead of time, you know, as we know, we have that visitor code of conduct now, that we have in policy, you know, we posted in all the buildings that, you know, basically, uh, applies the golden rule, right? So, act right when you're in the buildings, um, but this is kind of a, a piece of that. We, we know that, uh, we may not, we may not have done a, a really good job of communicating, uh, on the school side, uh, when there's some kind of an ejection from a game. Well, if you'll look on there, that opening in your folder, the opening letter that he sent, and I think most of you already know this, I know we sent it to you, but you've probably seen it. Article three, section nine of T double S double A bylaw states the following, for fans ejected by officials, I wanna be clear about that. Fans ejected by officials, so, there are different ways they can do that. The official, if the ref can do it, the official may say, turn around and say, you're outta here, you're ejected, but at the end of the day, the administrator, law enforcement, the coach, the athletic director, they can all work as a hand of that official by helping that happens, right? But it's not their choice, the T double S double A official is the person that ejected them from the game. So, you know, they, they could be, that could be facilitated through administration, but we will get this letter. So, it says the school will be fined a minimum of two hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, other non-monetary disciplinary actions may occur, which, you know, that could be like probation, or you can't come to any more games, or whatever, whatever, for that period. So, one of the things that we wanna make sure that we put out there for everyone is open transparency and good communication on this rule, right? Because some folks, uh, you know, it, it, number one, I don't want it to be a surprise, and number two, we wanna make sure that we're doing it correctly. So, uh, our thinking is, if, if, um, if a fan is ejected because of disorderly conduct, they're, you know, yelling, or cussing, or throwing stuff on the field, or whatever, and the official, the T double S double A official says that they're ejected from the game, right? That fine, and T double S double A will go to the school, well, in our opinion, it's not really the school's deal to have to pay that, I mean, the fine should go to the person who was ejected, right? In some cases, that happens, and the fan's like, ooh, my bad, I got this, I'm gonna pay it, take care of it. But a lot of times, the school's eating it too, and they just pay it. So, um, moving forward, we thought that this would be a good procedure, now, keep in mind, this is not a policy, it follows what T double S double A is saying, but it's a procedure, remember, y'all set the policy, and then require me to enact procedures that go along with the policy, right? This would be a procedure, and that stuff that James sent kinda gives you an idea of what that would look like. To me, the biggest thing is, is, is communication, it's everybody knowing on the front end, okay, here's what could happen in this case, right? The letter will come from the T double S double A, uh, headquarters, and it'll come to that school. I, I don't know, honestly, if it comes to the parent or not, I don't know if anybody knows that, i- it goes to the school, I know. Um, but, we wanna make sure we have something in place so that there's no confusion on this in future contests. Uh, believe it or not, that's the short version, uh, there's a longer version, but if you read through that, I mean, I think the procedure kinda speaks for itself. Um, and if there's, you know, any feedback or things that, you know, you would like for, uh, Mr. Fields, uh, and I'll look at with this, you know, we're more than happy to take any of that feedback and, and tweak this, if you think, if you think it needs to be, you know, tweaked or added to, if it doesn't make sense, or it's not clear, or whatever you think.
Are you assessing, I'm reading through this.
No, Ms. Gil, go ahead.
CTE.
The, uh, the coaches, I'm reading through the coach part too, and I read through the fan part. Are we assessing that to them, because it looks like the school has to pay the fine, but are you assessing the coaches with the five hundred dollar fines too?
The coaches, uh, in most cases that I've been aware of, the coaches have had to pay that, their own fine, yes.
One thing I had a question about, don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead. Talks about the suspensions and all that, and it says, a fan may not attend without first meeting with school officials and paying the two hundred dollar fine. If any of these criteria is not met, this will be a now two-game suspension from any type of athletic event. So, they don't pay the two hundred fifty dollar fine, they get additional two hundred, or two-game suspension, and we're still left holding a two hundred fifty dollar bag.
That's, that's how that reads, yes, and we made that verbiage, so, yeah, if you wanna update that, I mean, we're cool with.
Yeah, it, it, I don't think the bag needs to fall on us, we, in a case like this, you've got thousands of spectators, and one wants to be belligerent for reasons unknown, um, we can't be our brother's keeper there.
Yeah.
Um, so, if we can find, if they don't pay it, they, they need, it needs to be a, a ban, a permaban. It, could it be a situation, and I, I, I agree with you, and I'm not gonna take long with this, but, to make people aware, is this something at the very beginning of school, when you've got all this stuff, you gotta sign this guy, could we produce a form that has the TSA rules? Their policy, what our policy is, and, and when they sign it, and make an acknowledgement, if you, once this form is signed, you acknowledge T, T, T double S double A, ours, and you will be responsible for that, that way they can't say, we didn't know.
Right.
And now they're legally liable to pay the fine, and we're not left holding, I mean, that's two hundred dollars, that, that takes away from education for our kids. I don't like that.
Yeah.
And I don't like the T double S double As, because they don't define what they deem unsportsmanlike conduct. I don't, non-definitionist policies laws of, of people mind, and they don't, they, uh, inefficient.
We've seen those a few times.
Yes, you have, but I just don't think the school system should be holding back on this one.
No, I'm cool with that, as a matter of fact, it could be in paperwork that we include, maybe in the handbook, that kinda thing. We can also have that bad boy platform right on the webpage, like we have the clear bag policy for game, it can be on there too, with the visitor's code of conduct and all that stuff on there. So, a hundred percent, and if you're, if you know it all ahead of time, that also kinda, you know, takes away the, the arguing factor at the end about, whoa, I didn't know, that's been, and we've had that in place.
We got that forms, where you sign this in the beginning, acknowledging both policies, and if you did something to get ejected, you might even want the rest of it in there.
Ms. James?
I, I may overlook that it is, it says, uh, fans, is it the other side, are, are opposing teams fans?
More than likely, if, well, no, more than li- my understanding is, um, and I'll, I'll clear this with Mr. Fields, you know, he's the district athletic director, I'll clear it with him. But my understanding is that that school is responsible for that fan, so if it, if it were to happen, if Munford and Millington, since we have a guest here for Millington, if Munford and Millington are playing each other, right, and, and we're playing at Millington, okay, and one of our fans is ejected, more than likely, that, from, that T double S double A notification would go to Dr. Fee at Munford.
I see.
That, that's my understanding on how that would work, um, so that we would be responsible for our own folks, basically, right? Um, but, if, you know, also, if they didn't know who that fan was gonna, and might first go to Millington, and then both see it and say, whoa, that's not our fan, send it to Combs, so that, that could happen too, yeah, yeah.
We, we talked about, are you going to place, is this, other than the website and, and the Skyward, is this going to be posted anywhere at the athletic events? We talked about that, is that correct, or do we?
We, we could post it, kinda like the clear bag procedure, we have posted on, we can do that.
I don't, I didn't know if we discussed that or not, I thought that kinda brought up, but.
Uh, and Mr. Fields may have talked about that, but I think that's a good idea, and, you know, as coaches, like, you know, they, they have those beginning of the year meetings with their kids as they're there, that's always good stuff to hand out, as you hand out the rest of those materials for, you know, football, basketball, soccer, tennis, well, whatever it is, you can hand that stuff out then too, and remind, a little reminder is always nice.
So, our SRO, uh, facilitates the ejection.
That's a good, that, I think that was my, that's a good question, so, do you want?
Or, or the SRO, or the administrator, it, it doesn't have to be the SRO, it can be the administrator, but now, here's the deal. Uh, at any point, if they become unruly to the, you know, to the extent that the administrator is like, okay, you know, this, this person's going crazy, then they can call not just the SRO, they can call nine one one, they can call any number in law enforcement, physically remove them from the, from the game.
Are you going to make sure that the administration is clear on this policy, what I'm getting at is, is they get ejected, we're at a football game, it's real busy, stuff like that, they come to the administrator, hey, will you eject that fan? That, that administrator needs to, I mean, I'm assuming that administrator needs to know, hey, I'm coming from T double S double A, they have, they have, you know, bans you, this further policy, blah, 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 this is what you need to look at, I mean, just more communication, based on some examples in the past, I wanna be sure that we're clear on that.
No, I think that's a very good point, and yes, sir, that, that will be, they will say, um, you know, this is on behalf of T double S double A, this is how this is working, to make sure they know that this isn't, this isn't an ejection on behalf of the, the administrator, it's an ejection on behalf of T double S double A. Now, saying that completely separate from any of this, right? You can be unruly, and the administration and SRO, whoever eject you from the game, and, and the ref not do it, I mean, you can still act, you know, you can still act inappropriately and, and be ejected from the game, but no fine associated with it, that's right. This is, this is purely after T double S double A's rule, when we start getting these two hundred fifty dollar fines, and the schools are going, whoa, now, wait a minute, I didn't do it. What am I getting, so, yeah, so we wanna make that clear.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion on that?
Some good questions.
I was just thinking about the legal part of it, so, if a fan does go out, because there's other fans besides mamas and daddies that sign their kids up for school.
Right.
Uh, is law enforcement, if, I'm just trying to figure out how we enforce it thereafter.
Look about them not showing up to the games?
Right, are we doing, are we memoing it, are we giving them a no trust?
We're gonna do one of those profile pictures at the gate?
I don't, that's what I'm.
That's actually a good question, I, I, I don't know, we could, we could check that, I, I don't know, I think they would probably be on a, a list more than likely, and be known, yeah, because, you know, we're, security's pretty tight at those games generally, so, um, that would be something they would all know to look for. Yep, that's a, that's a good question, yeah.
How many, percentage wise, how many, how many of these are rece- received, do you know, in the county?
Man, probably, I don't know, I'd, I'd say between five to eight a year, not a ton, but, but they do happen.
Okay, okay.
That's all the sports.
All of them.
Yes, sir, okay.
Yep, yep.
Just get it together, just get it together, oh, honey. We're just going as your paycheck, right? Any other discussion on that, that's a procedure, right, nothing to be voted on, that's, you know, so, if you have, I don't know, if you, if you have any comments or anything, obviously, give it to Dr. Combs, and maybe type, if you need something lined up, and that, but.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll talk to Mr. Fields about that sentence in there, about adding that, the word, at some point, it has to be paid.
Yeah.
Or you're not, or you're not coming back to it.
And it is when two games suspension, no, I'll just take two games suspension, not to pay.
That's right, okay.
Yeah, needs to be a little more severe.
Sounds good, uh, anything else, Ms. Fields?
Uh, no, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes, sir, I don't have anything uploaded for photos, but I do have some of the names. Got these from the student candidate today, he flew the drone, we do have some drone footage that we will post for you guys, um, so you'll have it on through our school laptops. Sorry, Dr. Byrd, I didn't get those taken down today. But these are just some area footage of what's, what we currently look at as of today. So, um, you're welcome. So, as you can see, pictures of personnel, we're gonna show you all.
Okay.
Guys, this here, this is, this is as fresh as you can get, other than going out there tonight, so, uh,
Field trip?
As you see on the far, you see on the side over there, you got, you got roof going on, so, we, you know, other than, we, we're starting to get what we considered in the dry. What we've got going on is currently, we have about, we have fifty, um, land blocks, we got eighteen iron workers, we got nineteen working on the foundation and slab. The next big four is just coming, um, a week from today. Once the weather clears out, it'll be for areas G, E, and C. Block work on J area is ninety-five percent complete, H is ninety-five percent complete, G is seventy-five percent complete. And area L has its first lift.
Okay.
Um, the east parking lot has the binder down now, and, you know, from the logistics working into this time of the year, having somewhere to be able to park and mobilize and get around the job site is critical, so we're, we're, we're currently now, we can get three hundred and sixty degrees around the job site, which is huge, or, you know, as we press through the winter. Fire line is ninety-five percent complete, all joists are set in H, and L is ninety-five, H is, excuse me, all joists are set in H. L is ninety-five percent, G is about forty percent, additionally, started in all areas that have set, joists that are set, and the gym is complete. So, these guys are definitely staying committed and on site and staff, as I've trained them today. Again, just reassuring the urgency of the communication and, and the time of this, of what we're trying to achieve here, this is still very promising. Commit us there, guys, so.
Yeah, excellent.
If you guys wanna field trip, by all means, don't hesitate, give me a shout, we've got, they've got a nice ranger, they'll give us a, a grand tour. We can take them in one team, we can take it as a group, however you wanna do it, so, um, appreciate the, the feedback from the community, they're all seem excited. You know, every, every time I get a chance to get out to the Mexican restaurant, somebody's excited to see what's on one of them. It's a different feel than it was a year ago, and I, and I'll take it as, you know, the, the vibe and the. It's a different feel than it was a year ago, and I, and I think it's, you know, the, the vibe in the community in the holiday season is a lot more vibrant than what we had, so.
Will you give a, um, a shout out, who's doing some of your, uh, your drone video footage?
So, the drone that you're, the footage that you'll see that I'll share with you is, I read from, from the JJ, from Covington High School, as a lot of you know, is the Woo Crew. So, they go out and, uh, Jay Johnson, they go out and.
CTE, baby.
Digital agronomy.
Yeah, and they've got great footage, and I, and again, we'll get that sharing, and I'm sure Doc will start posting some of it, sharing some of that stuff on the webpage. Because it really gives you the, you know, the real, the feel, and to see what these guys are learning, and how they're, you know, flying these drones is really cool. So, um, but, but will you ask JJ if he would, you know, give us some footage from him, and like I said, we get it from the contractor as well, but comes a little different touch of feel from the student, so. Getting any questions for me at the moment, other than outside of this?
You hang that flag up on the side of there?
That, that flag actually was provided, which one, which one are you, are you referring to the? The Covington flag, I wanted to give credit to Dr. Combs for having that, uh, he came up with that, dropped it off, and it got over about a week later, and he's like, hey, man, I'm not flying my flag, can you figure out what's going on? I'm like, I'll get on that. The answer was when I'm a crane, being able to get up there.
Actually, that flag, that's like a five by eight flag, you put it up there, just like, man, that thing looks like two feet tall.
But Dr. Combs, he, he, he felt the need to go ahead, you know, for the Covington community, a little purple and gold hanging on the side of the building, you know, did a lot of wonders. Doc, Doc gets credit for the flag.
Thank you, a little something.
Yeah, so, thank you, Hunter. Thank you, guys, thank you all for what you all do.
Thank you. I would highly suggest, y'all get a chance, you get out there and give it, Hunter, something, and, uh, Dr. Combs will go out there and look at it, if you get a chance, right around this.
It's not hard, if you give us a shout, you know, it might not be that same day, we can shout there pretty well.
Well, do we have anything else? Anything else to discuss, I think that's it on our agenda. Dr. Bird, taking care of everybody that's sitting.
All right, good.
Well, nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Edwards makes a motion, second to my Mr. Jenkins, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?